Good evening, everyone. Glad to have you all here. I'm going to call this meeting to order, the City Council Meeting, this June 9th of 2015, and I have 6:32 PM. And if you would please, I'm going to do the invocation and I'll leave the pledges and the leissons to everyone in this meeting. Almighty God, we acknowledge our dependence on you and we pray for your continued blessings and grace. Guide us, oh Lord, as we strive to govern ourselves in keeping with your will for us. May our efforts be pleasing in your sight. In the precious name of our Lord and Savior, we pray, Christ be with us. Amen. The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the first question is of Citizen Communications. We have one from Judy Womack.
Good evening. I'm Judy Womack from Austin Beautiful. And tonight I'm here to recognize two very special people that have won awards through Keep Texas Beautiful, Jesse Loftus and Stephanie Fernandez. Would y'all like to come up? The first award goes to Jesse Loftus. He has won the 2015 Ruthie Jackson Youth Leadership Award for collecting over 178 pounds of aluminum cans at the middle school.
Wow.
And that's a walk, I mean, you can just imagine how much that weighs. He's been chosen, there were many, many students that were nominated throughout the state, and he got first place for the middle school category. And in that, he won $100.
Oh, wow.
For Keep Texas Beautiful.
Twenty dollars?
A hundred. There's five twenty dollars.
Five twenty dollars?
Yes. I hope you know what you're gonna do with it. You are so welcome. The award goes to Ms. Stephanie Fernandez, his teacher. And she got third place through Keep Texas Beautiful for the Sadie Ray Graff Educator State Educator Award. And that's a really big deal, too. She has taught her kids the value of recycling, of conservation, beautification. They plant flowers at the school. They have a little community garden in the center there, which is absolutely wonderful. And she's gone above and beyond what most teachers do. They plant, what, six to eight, 64 gallon cans every week?
Recycling.
Recycled cans, yes, yes. So she's still around. And this is her award. You are so welcome.
Thank you, Judy. Thanks to you, too, for the recognition. Now, we need to look at the minutes from the May 12, 2015 Regular Council Meeting. Are there any edits or corrections that anyone had? Mr. Jaskus says no. Kimberly?
No.
And so, do I have a motion that we accept the minutes as written? Please, please, makes the motion? Anyone second? Robert Jaskus, second. All in favor of accepting the minutes as written? Kimberly?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Consider and take any action necessary, this is item number eight, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of the Library Technology Commission. That's number seven, I'm sorry. Pardon me. That's item number seven. All right. Well, I'm sorry. I'm getting things out of order. Item number seven is, consider and take any action regarding appointment of Chris Becker to the Parks and Recreation. Do you have any presentation? Anyone have any comments?
Pressure here, Ron. Well, I introduce myself. I'm Chris Becker. And I've been with Van Austin for about the past five years. I've got two girls that go to school here. I am interested in, you know, the growth of our city and how that takes place and what we need to go through the quality of the water for our current residents. And I think starting with Parks and Recreation is the subject. Let's see, like, uh...
You will be our last guy, so you are full board. Do I have a motion for appointing Mr. Chris Becker to Parks and Recreation? Please, please, makes the motion? Robert Jaskus, second? Approved?
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous? Is unanimously approved? The appointment to Parks and Recreation. Now, consider and take, item number eight, consider and take action necessary regarding approval of the Library Technology Plan. Does James, do you have any presentation?
I have not. The adopted plan is approved by the library board, is included in your packet. This is what the technology plan is, is the requirement, five years...
It's kind of hard to hear what you're coming here, please.
Certainly.
That way, we're not sure if Mr. Kelly answers as well.
With the technology plan's requirement by the Texas State Library, our price commission is to maintain our information status submitted once every five years. And basically, the technology plan is to look at what we have right now, the technology is in-house operating right now, and that is to, if you look at your packet, it's an extensive exhaust list that our team have. It's a five-year look down the road and a plan to where we want to be, how we get there, how to maintain staff, training and education, and as well as budget to get through the W N, which is included in my schedule. Do you have any...
Do I have a motion for approval of the Library Technology? Are there any... You know, I should be asking for comments. Do you have any comments or questions?
That's right.
Well, I'll just say that I'm basing it on the library board.
Kimberly, any comments or questions?
I do.
And so, you have a motion in the second. All in group?
Aye.
All right, it is unanimous? The next item is number nine, consider and take any action necessary regarding use of government capital corporations funding previously approved in the amount of $973,000,[536.12][536.12]$973.83 and $20 cents to purchase vehicles and equipment for the Public Works Department.
Counsel, we have Steve White. It's coming up to Steve. That is the full amount of the loan. What's remaining is the $52,182.98. Steve's asking for a recommendation. What was in your packet? Delivered and discussed with more staff ads? And Steve has another recommendation that he put in front of you. Steve, would you like that?
Yes. With the remaining balance, I'd like to buy a specialized tool that fits on a sewer machine that removes our lines from every, every coating for grease and roofs. So the specialized tool actually used to cut the grease from roofs out. And the remaining balance, I'd like to purchase a 263 radial weed miter that will push this almost open little hat away on that all of the wood is replaced, get them all installed so that it cuts down on the manpower and also the manpower they were going to need to return to, when air and sewer runs.
Any questions or comments? Oh, Kimberly, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I don't think.
And so, do I have a motion for funding the previously approved amount of $973,000, $83.20 to purchase vehicles and equipment for the Public Works Department? With the amendment that Steve has proposed, do your remaining balance go towards a sewer and grease cutter and radial weed mitters?
So, as you're pressing.
Second. Was it Blake's second? All in group?
Aye.
Are these unanimous? Thank you. Item number 10, consider and take action regarding awarding the construction contract for the rental repair slash renovation of the fire department personnel facility in the amount of $89,213.34 to LSR Commercial and authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the same. Do you have any presentation?
Mayor Council, Living Management, Manager Johnson has overseen the RFP, and is also also oversee the project.
This is the project to repair the roof of the fire barracks. The design was done through the agreement with the insurance company, and we went out for bids, and our real bidder is the LSR for the specified, we checked the references to the financials, and we were ready to finish reporting.
Any questions? Please, Mr. Kelly.
Has the roof been leaking since that occurred, or has it been sort of patched up to where it made it through, or have you had...
It's been leaking quite a bit.
It's been leaking quite a bit?
Yes.
Is there anything else that we're gonna have to fix because of what's... You have the...
I mean, they're gonna basically replace all the sheetrock and everything.
Okay. Oh, that's all part of the problem? Okay.
The only other hurdle we have to get over is we're actively working to identify barracks. Since this is what is covered by the roof, it's failing, part of the problem barracks for firefighters is we're gonna have to find temporary quarters to put them in, so that we're working, so that we don't have any problem with that. But that would, that would...
I see.
Sorry. No, we're good.
Just doing any questions or comments?
It's a pretty extensive repair. It's free roofing, it's framing, re-roofing. We just basically... And the insurance is paid. My question continues. We're working, we're making sure that our insurance cover.
Mr. Kelly, any questions or comments for Mr. Manis? Mr. Jaskus coming in?
Yes.
Oh, he was just saying that his...
They wanted like...
I don't want to put words in his mouth, but he just, his question had been answered, he said. Do I have a motion to approve the awarding of the contract and to authorize our city manager? Like what? Like, make a motion in the second? Close for four seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Is it unanimous? Item number 11 is, consider and take any action necessary regarding passage of ordinance, repealing ordinance number 667 to correct the stridener's error in rezoning attractive land, being a zero point 337 acre portion of 2,647 acres of abstract number 851 of the Ashley McKinney survey in parentheses G dash 0851, McKinney Ashley A dash G 0851, more commonly known as 1363 South Way District. Any presentation?
Mayor Council, what we ended up having, what we found was that back in 2012, January 2012, the minutes reflected that council agreed for the property of the zone, neighborhood convenience, however they submitted for C1. And so, when the ordinance was put together and signed, it was still C1, what had been originally recommended. However, the minutes reflected neighborhood convenience. And conversations legal, what takes precedence isn't necessarily the ordinance itself, but what exactly council agreed to back then. So neighborhood convenience is what it should be, although the ordinance says differently. And that's what's recommended by staff as well, to make sure that these properties are following the path present. So it's...
If you have any questions, you can add any issue. And see, we are referring, the ordinance being repealed is number 667, and the ordinance that we're voting on.
You have your ordinance, you have your minutes from, you have your ordinance, and then your minutes from the January 10th Council Meeting. And then what's being proposed, it doesn't have an ordinance number yet, because it hasn't been adopted by council. So, did I correct you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're gonna end up, the ordinance will receive an order once council announces.
So are your, Mr. Blake, are there any questions or comments? Mr. Manis?
No, he's got his governor.
When they came in to check the zoning of the property, so they believe there was neighborhood convenience, however, on the map it showed to be C1, and the ordinance showed to be C1. So, and looking back, Jennifer did research, looking back at the minutes, looking at comparing the two, and then just having a discussion with legal, decided that, legal decided that what council's action was, was reflected in the minutes, precedes the ordinance. So that's why we have to go back, and even though, even though we're asking for action, we want to make sure that y'all confirm that, yes, it is, should be neighborhood convenience, instead of us just wanting that road to be that better.
Any more questions? I want to make one note, and I hate doing these nifty things, but on the, in section six of both the old ordinance and the new ones, on our page, very bottom line, I think the sentence reads, Van Austin hereby declares that those who would have passed this ordinance, and I believe the word should be "it," in other words, it should be, Van Austin hereby declares that "it" wouldn't have passed the ordinance. And so, so I can make it like that. Ask me any question?
Is this, is this a two action repeal or a person? It's, it would all be the same person, is that correct?
Right. So do I have a motion to approve the repeal of the old ordinance and the acceptance in the second? And would that include also the small air...
Yes.
And all proofing? Kimberly?
Yes, aye.
And so it is unanimous? Next item, number 12, consider and take any action necessary regarding passage of ordinance establishing a no truck zone on Kelly Lane from St. John's Drive to South Dallas Avenue. Any more comments about that?
Mayor Council, we don't have legal. I briefed y'all a little bit earlier. We don't have legal here at the meeting tonight. They didn't have the concierge ordinance for the no truck zone on Kelly from St. John's down to Dallas. Finished for review wasn't in your packet. So we don't have anything for y'all to approve. I would ask that you table it. I will, we can have some discussion if you want to take any notice of legal when they bring back the ordinance. They're saying that they would have it ready at the 17th, which would be, well, we'd have the PNC meeting, and we'd also have the short workshop for the lighting issues, so we'd also have a short meeting to look at the no truck zone for one thing to resolve. It is an ongoing issue. Also, we have Dennis Smith back in the meeting, because he lives right there at the corner of St. John's Drive and Kelly Lane. Mayor Cooper and I went over to his house the other day, just dropped in, spoke with his wife, because they had some issues as far as trucks cutting short and running through their yard. So we're not only looking to, we want trucks to be able to come and make deliveries, but we're also gonna be looking at some type of issue to resolve trucks cutting short in all of their yards. We may have to drop a couple of posts. I haven't gotten with engineering yet to find a complete resolution, because we talked about with Janet Prom, we talked about a number of different things here. Since we got a run ruck, right of way issue, we don't want to make anything permanent that doesn't break the law, because then we're not complying with that. So we'll be working with, we'll be working with engineering and bringing council also a resolution, trying to fix what's going on with this, this problem. But what, what legal matters, and what I'm asking y'all to do is just to table it until the second. We will have something, um, to do with that.
And so, not being able to look at an ordinance, a new ordinance, discuss further, Mr. Blake, do you have any questions or comments?
What would be the proposed route? You eliminate that route.
Here we go.
I don't want to make things complicated.
I understand. But what we end up having is, within the, where the subdivision begins at St. John's, we have the proper turn and radiuses. So trucks making a delivery into Georgetown will be able to go, what we're looking at is having, having truck route signs established at Kelly down there at the front edge, and also Village Parkway, do we already have those, Chief?
No.
Okay. So establishing truck route signs at Village Parkway and at Kelly, so that way trucks know that that is nothing, unless you're making a delivery, that isn't a truck route. The other issue is making a no truck zone there from St. John's to Dallas, because we don't have the proper turn and radiuses once you get down to Houston and Dallas. So trucks will be pushed into that are making a delivery, hopefully they're going to St. John's anyway to go in and drop something off and get out. But Georgetown has the proper turn and radiuses, as long as people are parking, parking in front of their homes and everything, for trucks to get in now. So the resolution is trucks to turn on to St. John's, come out of Georgetown, but at the same time, we're gonna even try and make sure that it doesn't create a bigger issue for Mr. Smith to play. So we've got a couple of things going on, but we need that no truck zone, because once you get down to Houston and Dallas, there's just no way for them to make an effective turn without just rolling through somebody's yard to return, whether they cut it short or cut it wide.
Is it possible to create, widen that section of Kelly Lane in that area to give them a swing?
We'd need, we'd need to ask for right of way to get the proper turn and radiuses. And so, the resident on either side may be willing to do that, but with them being on small, with, taking a look down there at Dallas, where Dallas and Kelly come together, those aren't some of the larger lots in town. So we'll be asking for a right of way to make the proper turn and radiuses, really we've got a new road in Georgia going in front of us. So what do you think?
I mean, it'd be difficult, they can't. And it has to make a real quick estimate there, too. I mean, we've already got, we've already got complaints about ready right there at that intersection already, just to get those trucks ready down the way. So what we're trying to do is prevent barrier at that point, and keeping them south of St. John's. That's the key.
So it requires some additions in signage, but it's, I mean, we're, we're drowning in signage, but it'll help us, it'll help us in getting, establishing a no truck zone, as well as establishing the truck route, or identifying the truck route, trying to keep these vehicles off there. And then although with the chief being able to force as well, as often as it's called, cancel whatever they're trying to do.
The challenge, Chief, so these guys that are making deliveries, according to our ordinance, they can drive near anywhere now that they're making the delivery. So would you not say that these construction delivery guys are gonna be able to make that same claim, so they're gonna be able, that truck route's not going to affect them because they're making the delivery?
Well, I mean, you could ask for a bill of lighting where they're going to deliver, if it should have an address on it, but, I mean, they could use that as a defense when they come to court.
So that's what we're asking for, is that on Kelly, from Dallas to St. John's. Of course, I don't have, I don't have the document to show you, so...
Do we really need to, to advise on this as well?
Yes, sir.
Right.
Questions or comments? Mr. Kelly, any questions or comments?
I do not.
All right, well, do I have a motion to table aside, to, to the more important to look at and discuss? Mr. Blake? Mr. Jaskus, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Manis? Do you have, that's tableed, man. Discussion regarding inspection of rental homes by the city. This, I'll go ahead and make this presentation, because this is just something that occurred to me the other day, I was, let's see, was it just last week, I think, reading the Herald Democrat that Dennison was working on an ordinance to inspect rental homes. And it occurred to me that we might want to do something like this, too. And the reasons for it, the big reason for it is because, well, rental homes are at premium right now. It's not easy to find a home that you can rent. And we want to make sure through probably, through an inspection process, that these rental homes are happy. We may become kind of desperate to rent a house or an apartment, and I'm not talking, I'm really not talking about the big apartment complex, I'm talking about apartments that are built on the houses, or above garages, or... They ought to be periodically inspected, or after, once a resident leaves, it should be set up for an inspection to make sure that the new incoming residents are moving into a safe, habitable place. So that, that's the big incentive. Now, Dennison is, the newspaper article said they were charging $6 to $5 per inspection. When I talked to the Assistant City Manager in Dennison, he told me that it probably wasn't going to be that much. And I expect that it would be the less orders and property owners who would pay to have the inspection done. I don't think that's possible, and should be put off the rental home people coming in to rent. So that's the kind of thing I'm talking about. And so it's only for that much discussion tonight, just to kind of throw the idea out there and let the folks be thinking about it. And that's, that's the only purpose for this item, not for action, just for consideration. And it will come up to you. So, does anyone, who would be, who would be responsible for doing the inspection? Well, in Dennison, it's going to be city personnel, and they're actually gonna be hiring. Now, I know Dennison's a lot bigger than you know. They're gonna hire two people, and they expect those to be salaries to be paid by the fees for the inspections, but it would be the city. And I don't know how involved that's gonna get. That might mean that people who have rental properties are gonna have to register somehow with the city, so that we know that we're there, and then they're gonna have to inform the city when they have tenants that move out. So it could get a little complicated, but I think it would be a good safeguard. Another purpose for it is if we get rental properties or small houses that are dilapidated, that are uninhabitable or unsafe, then they could be put on a list for, for... then they could be put on a list for, for, to mandate fixing them or for demolition. Is there any state regulations or, or good support? I don't know. If that's something to look into, I don't know.
If, if we were to take this on, we want to find, if, if we do, if council places to get ideas, we'd look at another city that's doing it that's successful because we want to make sure that the structures are being kept up to the base code. We initially contract for your very cost, but you have these inspections. So we tell it, if we're in Dennison, we'd be able to hire two people to do it. We would need, we would set up a very cost, make sure that the revenue's there before we went out and tried to hire our own inspector. And because you don't just have an inspector, you got the benefits, you got the fee. But it's, it's an idea. The assumption is that most, most of the rent, rent, rental offices here in town are in good shape. Otherwise, people wouldn't be trying to get into it. However, we do have some, some properties that are in rough shape that we've come to find that people are entering into the end of the ship. So this, this would be one of those obstacles that in, that it plays when they come to set up water, set up the water account that they need to get rental inspection before this happens. So we want to see how it's all, see how somebody else is doing before we buy off this chunk.
This is some, this is a business question. So it's not the new concept, it should be the new concept or is it?
Yes, sir. There's, there's strictly the old one, I'm saying, for the time being. Just like a C O for a house, building inspection goes in and gives the necessary fire, releases the C O for a home. Or fire specifically, fire marshal, looks into the marshal's side of the offices. Building inspection, electrical, plumbers, work out by the building. So we don't, we don't have anything, not listening to the structures coming online. If they're pulling a permit for renovation, then building inspection goes out effectively. Or it's part of a regular show of residential construction, the methods for it. And even in front of me, we want to find somebody that's doing successfully before we go out and create an issue or a physical. As we grow, we're headed where all the structures are being on their, on their site, where they're on your own line.
But I think it's a good idea.
I got you. So the main thing was Larry saw something and they were going to talk about it, see what you thought. We can follow, you know, we follow Dennison, see how, see how all plays out for them. I think where they don't end up, but their, their discussion is trying to get all set up. So we'll watch what's going on with them. We'll look at a number of other little cities that are, that are doing, doing this out there. We haven't found any from this year. But we didn't want to break something to y'all. Mayor may not be, the main thing is, is making sure that we're on, we're on the exposed outlets. You know, it's, it's really a struggle for us. She rocks in fact, like why I was covering, it's you, or it's lots of them have the open links. Where's my, you know, power shut off, figured it out. Or we've got gas water heater, gas appliances that are actually burning effectively. We're not going to get up the C O issue or get up, fire goes out, makes it got, you know, a little fluid on on the channel. That's our C O issue. They're protected from the, from the reception. So just little things that, that, that we're worried about problems here.
Mr. Kelly, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm a con and I think it's a very interesting issue to be discussing, discussing together. I do wonder about state action and our size regarding this rate and the agency Dave here with young and accurate.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, this was only for an introduction, just a little bit of discussion. It wasn't for any actions. I don't think I need a motion to move on. I want to check. Now, the next thing we have is an executive session on personnel matter. And I need, I'll just, I'm just going to read this verbatim. convening to executive session pursuant to section 551 dot 074 in parentheses, the words personnel matters regarding complaint filed by a former city employee. Now, if we decide to go into executive action, action, or executive session rather, the council won't be able to take formal action. We don't have a city attorney here. So if we go into executive session on this, we can't take formal action. We could take informal action or no action, depending on how the council feels about the report. So at, at this time, I think we need to decide whether we want to go into executive.
Okay, so we still have five and five, we go into executive session. All right.
All right, we are going to take a short break then. We're going to recess for five minutes. The time right now, so that we can go into executive session. The time right now is 7:08 PM and so we'll be back at 7:13 PM. So we'll go into executive session at this time.
Did y'all get a cold drink? Nope, they were here.
All right. We'll get going again. We went into the executive session at 7:16 PM. We adjourned the executive session at 7:50 PM. And now going to reconvene our open meeting. And the time is 7:53 PM. Oh, hold on a second. Do we need to take a vote? Okay. All right. And it was decided in the executive session that no action will be taken in the session. And since it's a personnel matter, it means it's strictly confidential. And so we move on to item number 15. Consider to take any action necessary regarding appointment, appointing a person to fill the vacancy on city council place one created by Larry Cooper's forfeiture. That does not sound good. And we have, we've decided to use application, an application process to try to pick a city councilman. And so now we've got five applications. One of them happens to live outside the city. But I want to thank Mr. Keith Yu for applying. It's gratifying to see so many good citizens applying for a job such as this. Place one of the city council. So applications that are here, consider are those Mr. Mark Steele, Mr. James Bo Mosby, Nancy Sue Webb, and Paul Nobles. Each has filled out. Now we've, I'm going to ask each of, anyone, any one of the four present who are eligible to introduce themselves. But I'm going to start with the first one, Mr. Mark Steele, the first here. This is 407 Rinmar Lane here in Van Alstine. Occupation, he's a graphic designer. He's lived in Van Alstine for 10 years. And as for why he would like to serve on the board or mission, which is city council place one, he says he would like to be a part of our town's positive growth in the coming years. And I'm, I'm acquainted with Mr. Steele. He's, he's been politically active for the last three elections that we've had. He's been a very, a positive influence announced. And Mr. Steele, would you like to introduce yourself further?
No, I really aren't going to be able to say anything.
And I'll say as to, as to all of these applicants, I know each of them, and they're all, they're all very capable, very bright. And already taken active roles in the city. And our next is Mr. Bo Mosby. He is, he's not present today, but he lives on 728 Rincon Street here in Van Alstine. He's a physical therapist and he's been a resident, he's lived in Van Alstine for 40 years except for when he was out of state, most likely in school. And he's been back here living in the city for the past two years. So he is eligible as to why he wants to serve on the, on the council. I want to serve the community, which raised me. I want to complete my father, B.C. Mosby's term that he had to vacate due to illness. And so that's Mr. James Bo Mosby. I know him also, I've met him. He's a, he's a very, he's quiet and deliberate. He thinks hard, he deliberates before he answers so he can say what he needs and does what he says. And then there's this Nancy Sue Webb, I know also, and I suspect most of you do. She lives at 235 Austin Place here in Van Alstine. And she's lived here since 1998 and she wants to serve on the, on the council, to serve the community. She's a fine person. I enjoy knowing her. And then there's Mr. Paul Nobles. Lives at 865 East Jefferson here in Van Alstine. He has, he's a web consultant. He's lived here, here for one, 1.4 years, which basically is eligible. He says, I wish to be a positive force to the people of Van Alstine and I wish to see the town grow in a complimentary way that preserves and protects the cultural heritage of Van Alstine. Four generations, I'm sorry, I hadn't told you the word four, four generations. Mr. Nobles, you want to introduce yourself further?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, that's really what I wanted to say. I think it's a great opportunity to be sort of like a, to be a part of something that's just about to happen. It's exciting. I'd love to be a part of that happening.
And Mr. Nobles also serves in other ways. He's on, he's on the K VAP that he found in the beautiful board. And he's started up, he's a historian, he's started up a historicist society.
And vice president.
And the vice president of the Parks and Rec. So he's serving, he's got seen on Parks and Rec board, he's full of ideas and the performance of the air routine. And so with that, I'm going to, now we have these four applications, we have no nominations yet. So I think the next thing we do is need to, well, first ask for any, any discussion, questions or comments? Mr. Nobles?
Yes, sir.
Do you look there from where?
Austin.
Are you, that kind of refers to not?
He's in the weird, you know.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd trust somebody. Yes, Keith. And you also run a coffee shop.
That's personal. Oh, I don't know.
No?
I own a coffee shop. My wife runs it.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm not allowed to be.
So you're a, you're, you're a web guy?
I'm a web guy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Couple things is really glad to see so much interest in this. This is exciting. It's exciting from the perspective of the interest. It's not exciting for me to be able to have to, or the desire to even want to make a decision between a few candidates. I'll tell you where I'm going with that and what I'm thinking personally. Number one, I don't personally want to nominate somebody tonight because a couple of these people I don't know. And I would like to give, if we are put into a position to put study up here, I'd like to know all four before I make a decision. I'd like to make a quantified decision based off of being able to know who all four people are. The second part of that is personally, and I felt this way the last time, and especially with this much interest, is I feel like this is a decision that needs to be made by the community and not by us. I really struggle with that as appointing somebody. Feel like if we had the urgent need to appoint somebody, that we would need to make that. Very difficult decision. Take three enemies and one friend. But, so I'm, this is where my mind is going with some of this personally today. I'm wanting to table this, number one, because we don't have council. Number two, also to get to purview, talk to some people so I can get to know all four, not just two that every time. And also I like to think, worry about whether I want to be a part of nominating or if I would personally, I'm leaning towards special election. I'm pushing into the question, I know, especially with this much interest in it. I personally would rather the citizens say yes and no to you guys versus us saying yes and no to you guys. I don't know if that, how clear that is, but that's where my mind is right now. So I wanted to kind of speak where I, where I'm sitting.
Can I talk a little bit? To back you? I don't understand what you're coming from because I've done a little thing to get off the back. The only problem, from what I understand, rules, regulations. I asked the board, did you did wait for the next election and then before the next time it puts a vote? And they would only serve till, you know, so, you know, because you can't have the, the special election.
Or we could send it to the next election and not special election.
And then the other problem is I think if you have one councilman out on the group and, and something's going to be replaced, then you can replace that one. If you lose another one, one of us dies or loses our camera or something like that, then at that point, you cannot elect anybody, you cannot elect somebody who doesn't represent. To a point, you have to have a special. So therefore, we need to get 100% of our agreements through the public at that point, not to be shot. Because we have, have a council, a public, a proxy for a little installation. So I feel like we need to be shot a little bit, not, not really something, or whatever.
So a lot of Hawaii.
Yeah.
So a lot of different things to look at.
Yeah. So it sounds like we're going to be involved in a, entertain a motion to table this.
Well, I'm, I'm basically, I have no clarity in my comments. I do know all four of these people. I've worked with them. I consider them all my friends. I am with Russell. I'm going to have a lot of time picking a fight, but I know who Billy says, I'm doing it. And I would hope that three that I didn't do don't hold against me. I, everyone has been involved in more than one task here. All four care deeply about the community or else they wouldn't be putting their names up here on this one. And I would just like to say that I would be happy to work with any of the four of them and vote for them all.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. It's Kelly.
I just want to say, basically what we also said, and that is that, our Billy and Russell, not Russell, Billy and Roger and who else? I guess it's just the two of them. Sorry. I really feel like all four of them will make wonderful City Council members. I think all of them care very much about the community. They know the community, they're active in the community. And again, it would be an extremely challenging choice, so to speak. I'm interested to see, you know, what motion we make. I would love some time to actually sit down and talk to each of them, although I know most of them very well. So that's what I'm thinking.
And so, is there a motion to, to table this?
A motion to table, I'd like to, I'd like to get. If we, it sounds like the council wants to move forward and nothing, somebody. I would feel more comfortable in place of voting, learning about the other judge.
Is there a second motion to table? Want to do a second motion to table? Ms. Kelly?
With consideration to your concerns and my knowledge, I think it's on the proper to table this one.
Table it for one month. So you're, you're seconding the motion to table?
Yes, I am.
So we, we do have a timing on the motion to table. First and second, okay. All in favor of tabling the motion?
Aye.
Alright, so that's three in favor of tabling the motion. So, again, so the motion to table carries. Now, Ms. Kelly suggests tabling it for a definite period of one month. So now do we need a motion to table it for one month? It sounds like she's going to make a motion. Yes, ma'am.
But if we have a special meeting coming up, will we be tabled to the next meeting?
No, maybe you'd be tabled to the next regular meeting unless you want it to be on the seventeenth. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. So if you feel like y'all can get to know everybody by the seventeenth, then it could be tabled to the seventeenth. Otherwise, with, with it just being tabled, it falls over on the next regular.
I, I have the next regular council meeting as July fourteenth. Is that, is that correct?
That's the exception.
Second Tuesday? Alright, so that motion is passed and then automatically it's, it's put off until July fourteenth, the next regular council meeting.
Correct.
So.
Three, I guess three. I don't know what you had there.
You, you will have a forum, that's why you should have three. If both, if you, Council Jaskel, Council Kelly are available, then y'all will be able to have a, have a special call meeting. We have to add all four.
Ms. Kelly, as far as you know, you will be available or you will be here for the meeting on July fourteenth?
Yes, I will be. I was wondering the fact that, one of the primary reasons that I said what I said is because Russell, he has plans to visit these individuals. And whether the fourteenth is that regular meeting or it's not the right date, table it too.
Well, I think.
Will we table that?
Can we not set up a certain date?
Well, y'all would be able, if y'all want to have a special meeting for Russell to return, then on the fourteenth, y'all would be able to table it to a special call meeting if we have one week after or whenever all four of y'all are available.
We've got the seventeenth of this week.
The seventeenth of this month.
I'm putting you in the first joint. I'm out next week.
So the recommendation would be, council recommendation would be to have it when all four of y'all are available after the next meeting.
Should we, can we set a date certain? Could we say, it's a long time, but August, August eleventh is the next meeting after July?
Can we set a special call?
I'll turn.
That'd be my preference.
Okay. How about the week of the twenty-second? Do you have your calendar up, Council Kelly?
Yes, it's on.
Isn't it twenty-third?
It's on Wednesday.
Okay, so June twenty-third? The twenty-third works for you, I mean, June twenty-third?
Yes.
Is that going to be a period, someone's the Parks and Rec? Is there any reason we can't have both? Actually, we can try and occupy the same space that we said I wanted before. The Parks and Rec is scheduled for six thirty.
It is, but we.
On the Tuesday?
I get your council, so y'all can either like the meeting before or y'all can like the meeting after.
Six o'clock.
There's balls to draw on, you see?
It's not a problem. You guys want to go first?
I'm, I'm not, but, but now, if, if the twenty-third works, then we can work with the Parks Board to either make it four or have it, what would council's desire be?
Any input?
Six or seven, do you want to?
Is there any at six thirty still?
Six, six, okay.
Six, okay. Six P M's okay? So, so you're, you're tabling this item to go to a special meeting on June twenty-third? Is that correct?
June twenty-third at six P M. We'll have a special City Council meeting.
And everybody's in agreement on that?
Yes, sir. Alright, considering taking any actions necessary regarding appointment of the mayor of Brooklyn.
I'd like to nominate Billy Blake as mayor of Brooklyn.
You're twelve here, morning?
Yeah, oh, six. Six. Now, what do you get?
I'll say.
Alright, we have, we have a nomination by Mr. Kelly and a second by Mr. Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so there's, there's three, we have four. All in favor, and so, yeah, that's everything. I guess you call that unanimous. You understand, so, alright. Alright, and so now, departmental report. Mr. Moore, do you have any reports?
I don't have anything.
Chief Lawrence?
Uh, nothing.
Uh, Chief Smith?
Nothing at this time.
Steve White, anything further?
Uh, no, nothing at this time. Well, we've, we've been working on the sewer. Preston is open now. It's repaired. We put in twenty feet pipe, it's a place that's broken. We're just trying to catch up and then we're more or less reacting to where we're going to be.
How much of our sewer is thirty feet of it down?
One bit of it.
And so anybody who goes down there, they've got to have the, they've got to have a force there. They've got to wear a mask.
They have to have some way to retrieve them.
Is it always going to be Jesse?
I could fit in there, but Jesse's skinny.
Ms. Council?
Some of our programs picked off Monday, so we've got some activity at the library at three thirty on Monday morning. And we're kind of expanding.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor and council, back with Commissioner Whitmire, Steve White and I did this afternoon. Looked at, gave my list of potholes to be patched. And we're also going to be turning those in as they are related to storm damage for the disaster declaration, which did expire today. Commissioner Ford didn't choose to extend it, if we are outside of the window of storms. We have a pothole patching list. He said that he would work to get it done next week. As far as shooting rock on the, on the streets that council approved, shooting rock down, getting, getting the surface down. He's working towards June twenty-second. Of course, he's, he's got issues. In fact, all the work he wanted to accomplish, county council as well, so he asked Russell to be with him and be, just be patient. He will, he will work that, that night. E C, CDC and staff have begun budget. We're bringing it to y'all, we're building down dates in July, August to get a, the budget identified and where we're headed. Let's see, Parks Board, we're bringing their, we're bringing their wish list. They have preliminary list, last Parks Board meeting. We're getting with the senior center to see what their identified needs are. We, we just replaced the whatnot identified expenditure. We replaced the H V A C unit in the Van Alstine museum. It's up running, it's been in the last week and it's doing well. Let's see. But then July fourth. July fourth, we have a car show, Friends of the Library Breakfast here as they do every year. Car show will be on Preston. And then of course, the school district has invited us to continue to have our fireworks up at the high school. And that'll be thirty minutes after dawn. And same vendors we've had for the last few years. So please, if you're going to be in town, please come to fireworks display. Because it is for your enjoyment, it is paid for with your tax dollars. And so it's, it's for you. So please come and attend. Other than that, must council have any questions for me?
Do you feel the potholes on Kelly's south of Park?
That was, that's, that's the county, that's our border.
I would just say, the public board's guys, you don't want to hand it to their laborer until you're ready. And I'd just like to ask everybody in the community, seeing here, if you're driving by, seeing the brush, something like that, give them a thumbs up. They go, they go for that all the time, it's right stick.
Yep, it is. I'm sorry, I have one other thing. Heavens, beautiful, did treatment for gray murdles down F M one twenty-one going from seventy-five west, where we got four lanes divided. Did an excellent job. The brush will be picked up tomorrow by our public. So I did coordinate that. So we won't just sit out there and blow into the, blow into the roadway and create an issue for us. Public will kind of pick it up tomorrow. But I want to thank KAB for getting that done.
See, I want to apologize for putting the executive session in the middle of everything, but we did that so that we wouldn't be dragging a brand new council into a personnel issue. But then we put off the election. Anyway, I, I appreciate y'all being here, I appreciate your patience. And I, I sure appreciate having you down. And I'll, I'll submit myself. Thank you very much. And so, do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay. Do you want to adjourn?
Yes, absolutely.
She didn't make her speech. Oh, I didn't ask you if you had any comments.
No, I didn't.
I'm sorry. We are adjourned at eight twenty-two P M.